City Council meeting on August 27, 2018. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Judy, let the roll call show everyone is present this evening.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from July 31, 2018. Councilmember Kennedy?
On page 15, Judy?
Yeah?
The sentence that's third up from the bottom, the standalone sentence, says, Mr. Vetrano asked Mr. Thompson. It's actually Mr. Vetrano asked Mr. Zelenak. That's all I have.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Walton?
You had announced that I would not be attending that meeting that night, and I don't know what was announced, but I know I had contacted you and said I was coming late, and I did show up late, so I don't know what you said and what should be documented there.
For the July 31 meeting, was that the one for the interviews?
Correct. Yes, and on page 16, it shows that I entered the chambers at 8:00 p.m.
Okay, I believe that's all we need, right?
I can check the video.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move the minutes as amended.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes. We'll now look to approve the minutes of the August 13, 2018, meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
On page, page two, Judy, it's right in the middle of the page, it says Margaret, the address there, the individual's name is Margaret Banitis, that's B-A-N-A-I-T-I-S.
Okay.
And then on page, actually pages eight, nine, Mr. Langdon's name is spelled in a couple of different ways, it's actually L-A-N-G-E-N, I believe.
G-A-N.
G-O-N.
A-N.
Okay, so we'll get it right one way or another here.
L-A-N, G-A-N.
Okay.
L-A-N, G-A-N.
Yep.
I got one.
And the last one is on page 10, middle of the third paragraph there, it starts off, if you brought in entertainment, that would take up more room and decrease the, what's missing there is seating capacity for the establishment. And that's everything I have.
Councilmember Parisian?
Councilmember Kennedy covered it, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Richards?
On page eight, it starts out with a comment of mine at the bottom, and rolls over to page nine, "I'm not quoted exactly correctly, but it's good enough, let it ride." But I do want to mention one thing, okay? It was omitted that Mr. Langdon indicated that the house on the corner of Dixboro and Lake Street is to be demolished in their plans. Having talked to property owners on the other side of the street, and having observed the property for a number of years, the house sat vacant for over a decade once upon a time, okay? But over the last six, seven years, there's been a $20,000 to $30,000 that's been invested in that house.
Point of order, this has nothing to do with the minutes.
It wasn't in the minutes, okay? And I want to make sure that is in the minutes.
That wasn't said at the minutes, or in the meeting, though.
Yeah, it was. Yeah, it was.
Got me to review the tape.
We will, we will need to do that.
Okay.
Councilmember, Tim, go ahead.
I want to bring to the council's attention page five, the council motion 8518. Looks like the motion is incorrect, there's a, it states that it's a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance on Thomasville. In fact, the motion was to postpone it to today's date, so there was no approval of any reading of an ordinance on that matter.
Thank you. Councilmember Kittle, you had something?
Yes, page three, in the fourth line down from my comments in Old Business, it says the layout for the density issues, and then a semicolon, it should just say from that point forward, lot coverage and many other issues, and skip the rest of that sentence, please. Thank you, that's all I have, thanks. I move the minutes as amended.
On second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes. We have no bills this evening, so we'll move forward to the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Chief Collins, go ahead.
In light of city attorney Wilhelm's, Wilhelm's comment regarding Thomasville, Old Business Number One should at this time read first reading of ordinance, rezoning parcel, et cetera.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything?
Mr. Mayor?
Tim, Wilhelm.
So, I would ask that the council add, in connection with the 825 West Lake Street matter, if the council approves the second reading of that rezoning, council's been provided with an agenda notes and the copy of the conditional rezoning agreement that would be presented for approval.
To be two-way?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll move the agenda.
As amended.
As amended.
I'll support.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we're going to open the floor for public comment. This evening, we will ask that William Charles and Lorenzo Cavallari start off as they have a, ask for an extension of five minutes to speak this evening.
Hi, I'm William Charles, I'm president of the Board of Colonial Acres Phase Five. With me is my vice president, and behind me is Lorenzo Kevler, who you all met. At the last council meeting, you tabled and asked that he meet with us, and we had a very good meeting, two-hour meeting, big show of people, and we're all in agreement on the development as presented. For aesthetic reasons, all as we asked, and they have agreed, that the vinyl fencing that are going to separate Thomasville from Colonial Acres be extended across the road, but built in such a manner by, and it's feasibly possible, I spoke to the designers, they can build it in such a way that its breakaway for a police car with push bumpers or a firetruck, and it will break away, and, but that will look more aesthetic than a metal gate or cattle-type gate. And after much discussion, that's what we agreed to, and we have no objections to the development on the northwest side of Colonial Acres as it's presented to the council. And if there's any questions, we can answer them.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Lorenzo Cavallari, 30078 Shainer Road, Born, Michigan. I'm here to answer additional questions once the item actually comes up on the agenda, but I thought that we had a very productive meeting, and basically it's down to the two items that Colonel Williams just, or Colonel Charo's just mentioned, that obviously is up to approval by, by, by council, but I think anything else that's been discussed or has come up in the past was pretty much addressed at, at the meeting last Tuesday night. Thank you.
Great. At this time, if there's anyone else that is here for public comment, please feel free to come up and state your name and address.
Hi, folks, Josie Kearns, 329 Lyon Boulevard. I'm with the Cultural Arts Commission of South Lyon, obviously. I just wanted to mention that at Pumpkinfest this time, we're going to have an art experience for students, for youngsters, and the parents, if they sign up with us, they can have their student artwork, their children's artwork, displayed at the, at the Sustainable and Sound Art Show that's coming up, October 26 is the opening, and it can be displayed for that one day, or longer if they would like, so that's very exciting. And we also have an update that's coming to you eventually, we're working on it still, because things are evolving, that will tell you all of this stuff, anyway. And then the quilt and fiber art show is moved to March, and there is going to be an art activity at Pumpkinfest as well, that if students do that, they can also put that in the March show. So we're linking the shows together, and also we just got a, we roped someone into, no, I'm kidding, somebody has been officially designated as our Chair for Public Art, who is Joe Matuszak, who just happens to be my husband, but he is having a great time doing it, and it's gonna, the, the first sculptures and other things are scheduled for spring. So it's all very exciting, and more to come, so, just a quick update, and you'll get a written update later. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we'll close public comment and move on to the discussion of downtown. Bob?
All right, a few items. Had some really great conversations, again, the building projects that are going on downtown. Also assured Pumpkinfest that none of these projects are going to interfere with Pumpkinfest, just talked to Lloyd about that today. We picked out the Victorian paint colors, another building has said, gee, can I be painted too? So it's really exciting to see the painting now, the finishing touches, and then 117 North Lafayette, it's second time the wrong brick came in, but the new brick should be back, and that project, they still hope to wrap up before the end of September. We are almost assured that a candy store will be coming in, in January, so we're really excited about that, and we're real close, too, to a gourmet food store, so, two new things, and, and I wouldn't mention it if I didn't think we were much closer, or, if it wasn't very close to being a done deal, so. Look for a candy store and gourmet foods, January, February. We're having a meeting on Thursday, this Thursday, regarding the two Bonner buildings at 113 North Lafayette and 135 East Lake Street, so we'll be able to report on the progress of that at the next city council meeting. Regarding the city's maintenance ordinance and the list of the five buildings, we also, I was just notified by restaurateur last week, that that restaurateur, restaurant developer is in negotiations for the purchase of 110 Detroit Street. I know Tim has been in discussion in the past with the attorney for 110 Detroit. I referred interested parties to the attorney for 110 Detroit, and they're now talking to the Providence Hospital Med Center people to purchase the vacant lot next to 110 Detroit. So, we're moving that list along, and we should have some more news on next city council meeting. Here Josie mentioned sustainable art, we're very excited that, we've been meeting with Superb Fabricating on doing, using more of their byproduct in areas, as you know, the railings at South Lyon Hotel, and the screening fence or wall at the Good Day Cafe, the old Browns. And Herb has some ideas to kind of take that whole recyclable product, and to look at trash containers and flour containers and other design items downtown. But what's really exciting about it is to partner with the ideas that Josie talked about with the Cultural Arts Commission. The DDA is actively involved in the public art downtown now, and Josie's husband, awesome, he came to our DDA meeting and to our downtown business and property owners meeting, and so we're really getting excited about that first sculpture coming up next year. Also, a potential poetry tour, which is a very unusual event, it's something that you'd see in, like, Ann Arbor, but we're going to do it here, so it's...
It hasn't happened to Ann Arbor.
It hasn't?
No, this is the first time, I'm sorry to interrupt, but Joe talked to John Grace, he was the director, the director of Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs.
Great.
And no one's ever...
Awesome, awesome. I stand corrected, I'm glad, we want to be first. We're talking about murals, professional murals, probably have to go back and visit the zoning ordinance if that were to come about. And then again, we're just excited to see that this whole relationship with public art for downtown is really going to the next step. So, a lot of great things behind the scenes are going on, it's going to be a really exciting September to December period for downtown, and I think a lot of these things will become something we can all be proud of.
Outstanding.
I had a quick question for you, Bob, really quick. Back in the springtime, we were kicking around the idea of something going on with that BP gas station and stuff, just on the other side of the tracks?
That's one of the, on the list of five.
Okay.
And it's, you know, it's a touch and go always, the zoning enforcement officer, Don Gotham, has been in touch with them.
Okay.
We're receiving regular emails, the owner of the South Lyon Square with Salvation Army is negotiating with them. At one point, they were going to get an easement to take down the car wash, because they're trying to develop the outlaw, and they need more parking.
Right.
So they may just purchase instead of have an easement, that's kind of where it's at.
Okay.
But they're working on that.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything for Bob?
Actually, I'd like a follow-up on that. Are we still pursuing them and their maintenance standards issues on the principal building?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Anyone else have anything for Bob? Councilmember Kurzweil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think that the excitement for what you're doing in the downtown is really great to watch, because in a couple weeks, you're going to have a leader coming into the city that, that appears to have a good understanding of DDA, and I think he is so fortunate to have you on staff as the Economic Development Director. I mean, I, I'm going to get into in council comment, but I spent the whole weekend being a butterfly, and talked to a ton of people, and I think this management blend that is beginning to develop, with a city manager with 30 years' experience, coming in with his talents and qualifications, and clearly your qualifications, and seeing what is going on in the downtown, it, it's a real positive buzz for the city, I'm just telling you. So, I'm so glad you're on the team, he's got a lot to do in the city, and I think he's very fortunate to have you managing that, the downtown, so.
Thank you.
I, I think if you're excited now, I think, I think the excitement's really going to happen within about eight months.
Yes.
It's going to be a powerful team, the two of you.
Yes, I, I'm excited, in fact, I spoke with Paul briefly on Friday, after I came back from vacation, and he was very excited, he's very thankful, he was, particularly, he was so fired up that he had a six-out vote. But he's, he's excited, and he just can't wait to come, we talked about downtown, he and I sit on, in the past, on two different boards, he and I now currently sit on the Michigan Downtown Association Board. He said he'd step down, and I go, no, why don't I step down and you take it? So we had a good, fun discussion. And then he was on the Main Street Olden County Advisory Board for years, so, we're not close friends, but I've known him for about 25 years, and I think we're a good fit in this community, has really picked a winner.
I'm even more excited. That's good to hear.
Yep, that's good.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Old Business this evening. Following Chief Collins's correction of the agenda, this will be the first reading of ordinance rezoning parcel 21-19-126-002, Thomasville, from RM1 Multiple Family Residential to PD Plan Development.
I had, I had received a phone call from Carmen, and he had suggested that the information that we were actually looking for hadn't been provided at that point, and, so I don't know if there's, I don't know what there is to talk about until we, we have clarity that they're compliant with what our, our expectations were, so. He said Mr. Cavallari had suggested that they had provided something, but it was after another meeting where the information was insufficient, and then the review, or the redo of that information was brought forward too late to be able to assess before the meeting, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Chief Collins?
Kelly McIntyre from CIB Planning is here and can address any questions, or perhaps clarify the timing and the deficiencies.
That would be great. Thank you.
Kelly McIntyre, CIB Planning. We received the information, I guess it was sent to the city on Wednesday afternoon, our understanding was we were going to get it Monday, so I got the information on Thursday morning. You know, city council packets go out Thursday afternoon, and it was a deadline of 1:00, so there was not ample amount of time for me to adequately review the plans, pardon me. The quick cursory review that I did do for looking at lot coverage, which was required or requested from you, the calculations weren't correct, so they need to be corrected. Again, I haven't done a full review, so I can't comment and tell you, you know, everything, and I, I like to, I always like to give a full review every time, to make sure that something isn't missed or, or slipped, so.
That's essentially what Carmen had relayed, yeah?
Yes, yeah.
Councilmember Parisian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attorney Wilhelm, I have a question for you. Is it possible to approve the second reading pending the correct calculations?
It was amended on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. So, because it's the first reading, is it possible to approve this with the conditions that, that the calculations are approved, or are amended, or are fixed?
These are the, I want to make sure I understand what the calculations we're talking about are. Are these the lot coverage calculations?
The objective had been for them to provide information that would assign the value of the lot size and relationship to the, the home, and the ability to have a deck patio structure still compliant to lot coverage rules. So that's, that's what didn't take place, and so, and there was some erroneous information at, at our last meeting, where it was, the 14.6% was alluded to, but that was actually buildings over the entire project's footprint, that included wetlands and open space and everything else. Well, that doesn't, that means nothing, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, so it's my understanding that council and the city in general was asking for information regarding the specific building envelopes, the range of residential structures or dwelling units that might be put on those, how they fit within the envelope, whether there's enough remaining space within the envelope to build decks or patios without needing additional waivers, and if so, get them reviewed and evaluated upfront before we proceed any further.
Precisely. That's my expectation, I can't speak for anyone else.
To answer Councilmember Parisian's question, you could, but I don't, to me, I'm just going to offer non-legal comment, it doesn't make sense to move forward unless you know that, because adjustments might have to be made to the plan if they haven't met the requirements, or that there's, if there's something that's unacceptable with respect to the waivers needed.
Thank you. He did a great job of explaining that, so.
Okay, thank you.
But I have any other questions?
There's no benefit to us to make the first approval if, you know, they can't satisfy us to be able to come about with the second approval, finally, so.
Councilmember Parisian, go ahead.
I was prepared tonight to move this forward, simply because we had asked you to comply with the constituents of our community, and meet with them, and just make sure that they were on board and had a full understanding of what you were presenting, and that was, that was one of the things I had asked, and you had complied with that, so I appreciate you doing that, and I'm thrilled that you guys have all had a chance to understand what's going on, and that you're all on board. So that was why I was planning on moving this forward, however, if the information isn't accurate, then it's not in the best interest of the city, based upon our city attorney's opinion.
Mr. Mayor?
Pretty well.
It wouldn't be unusual to approve a first reading pending the, you know, additional information that is administrative in nature, double-checking something. This seems to be basic information about the layout of the entire development, the lot sizes, and the building envelopes, and whether the structures intended to be built on them fit within the envelope in a way that will avoid problems that the city's had experience with on other developments, particularly planned developments.
I mean, that's, that's been the history of this, essentially, we make an approval and then find out that they can't actually support all the things that people want to put in this, a typical lot, so we end up having all these secondary kind of activities that we've got to conduct to be able to either approve or not approve somebody having the traditional amenities in a home, so.
Well, and you're, I would think your experience in having to do that carries a lot of weight up here tonight, so, if, does anyone else have anything to add?
I move that we postpone it to the next meeting.
I would like to hear.
If, if I may.
We'll open it up for discussion to Mr. Cavallari, go ahead.
On Monday, August 20, I received an email from Carmen from the city, and he'd asked for three things. One, the square footage of each lot. Two, the proposed maximum lot coverage for each house based upon building envelope. And three, anticipate a deck or patio for each lot, understanding that the home buyer must be informed of this as a maximum, in an effort to avoid future requests for variances. At the last meeting, my take was that what was most important was Lexington Drive, was it going to connect, and the concerns of Colonial Acres. Last Tuesday, we met, it was very well-attended, we went through the entire project, basically, it was, it was two hours of, of basically Q and A. On Wednesday, we responded to the three requests, and we revised the plan. The initial submittal to the city did include the square footage of each lot, it did show the proposed maximum lot coverage for each house based upon building envelope and the deck size.
All I could tell you was what Carmen said.
These are emails that were sent back and forth, there were three items that were clearly addressed, there was a question about the, the deck size, and we actually increased the deck width to, so it would be 12 foot in depth and 25 feet in width, so that it would avoid, if some, if somebody wants a deck wider than 25 feet, they should have to come to the city for variance. But 12 by 25 would, generally speaking, be able to address and accommodate home buyers in the future to avoid. I didn't, we, we didn't want to show as, as engineer or, or developer, we didn't want to show a small deck, and then put you guys in a situation at a later date with the variance situation. So, we increased the deck size to, on the plan, from 12 foot deep to 25 foot wide, and the end result of all this, of what we've been talking about in the last few meetings, and what was talked about in our meeting last week with Colonial Acres, is that the, there are four lots along the north side of the site that don't meet a rear yard setback, but that's all up against open space, and there are two lots in the southeast corner of the site that, but Colonial Acres, however we've, we've added to the plan, it's been on the plan for, for some time now, is the vinyl fence. So, these two lots... So these two lots here, which are lot numbers six and seven, are called out on the plan, have been called out on the plan. But we're, we're basically talking about these two lots and there are four lots here that are open to the back. All other aspects of this project as it's proposed and as it's been reviewed by planning remain the same. There are no changes to this design other than adding the calculation of building coverage per the envelope and then subsequently building coverage per lot. There was an additional comment made about the two-foot buffer between the sidewalk and the back of curb. That's shown in this road cross-section here. It was called out on one side of the cross, road cross-section and not called out, it was called out by dimension, but not called out by description on the other side. That is, that's something that I, anybody could miss, whether it's the preparer or the reviewer. And I did have the discussion with the city about the fact that that's just a note that's missing there. However, on the lot, on the typical lot design, it clearly shows the two-foot buffer and it calls it out. The comment that was made is that, is that buffer going to be irrigated and sodded as opposed to being left weeds? And I thought that was something that we could work through in, in the meeting in an effort to advance the project and forward. We, we are very clear in the fact that we have to go back to planning and we're very clear on the fact that we have to come back to council. And of the comments that we received as of last week have been addressed. And there's nothing else in the review other than what we just discussed that, that, that has changed. In fact, there's one lot that has now been removed from requiring any sort of setback issues whatsoever. There was a reconfiguration on, on the footprint of the building, so that's been eliminated. And other than that, the comments with the, with Colonial Acres have, I think, clearly been, been addressed and I believe that we're totally on the same page.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Prezian, you.
I spoke already.
Okay, that's fine. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Okay, so I attended the meeting at Colonial Acres. The subject that we're discussing was not something that was discussed at Colonial Acres. What they were focused on primarily was the aesthetics at fence and so forth. They weren't focused on lot coverage, the amount of area that was going to be addressed by the structures on each one of those lots. Wasn't a topic that was raised at the time that I was there. So if I understand, Councilmember Kibble's concern is you've called out about half a dozen lots where the setback needs to be adjusted. The other concern is of the remaining lots, how many of those with a 12 by 25 deck would be within the 25% maximum coverage as stated by the ordinance right now? Because I think the concern was that what you came in asking for is a blanket waiver for basically the whole development in order to put those decks in for every one of those lots. And that is, I think, the primary concern and that's why Councilmember Kibble asked for you to go back, calculate the coverage for each one of those lots with that, with that deck in there. Because what it came back as is with the deck and everything else that you're looking at exceeds the ordinance by about 50%. Okay? So that's why he was looking for that information and he didn't get it. And that's why he's asking you to go back and provide it. Okay? I understand that you had the meeting with Colonial Acres and that you worked out those issues and I commend you for that. It was a tremendous turnout on the part of the Colonial Acres residents there. It was well over, it was probably close to 200 people in that room. But the issues they were concerned about are different than the issues that Councilmember Kibble has raised. And that's the information he's requested, that he requested previously and he's still waiting for.
I got something to say.
Councilman Kennedy, Mayor, if I could. I consider the two being completely separate issues, separate buckets. And you were there the other night and, and thank you for coming. I, I was very happy to see that somebody was there that we, at least in case they thought that we weren't telling the truth over here, right? But the request was made of me last Monday and I responded that request on Wednesday. So when the request was made, I did respond to the city by Wednesday. The information that, that we're talking about is, takes us down to five lots and the question about are there going to be any other, any other decks which will encroach more than 25% into the rear yard? The answer is no.
It's not, it's not encroaching into the, the setback. It's lot coverage. Lot coverage, footprint of the house, footprint of the deck, not to exceed 25% of the lot. It's not encroachment on the setback. It's lot coverage.
Could I, could I ask a question? Because the example lot that, or the example home that you had given us at the last meeting was an 1,800 square foot footprint. Is that the, the model that you're using in your calculations here?
That's correct. The footprints of the homes have not changed from what's been submitted now for.
Is that a single story? I mean, that is the footprint on the ground, not that, not the square footage of the home?
Building footprint.
Okay.
Building footprint. All the building footprints are within the envelope and there are five lots where the, where a deck would go be.
It's into the 25% in the rear.
Would go beyond, into that setback.
Right.
And those are the five lots, three which are here, which back up to the pond, and there are two at this location.
Right.
But all the, all the, the building footprints are well within the envelope. When you take the footage on the building and the lot, I'm sorry, the building and, and the deck, it is less than the footprint, square footage. And that was the initial, that was the request that we received. I forwarded it to Alan Prouse from, from Monument Engineering. They ran all the kelks and the square footages of everything and we went back and forth and that's what was submitted last Wednesday.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prezian, go ahead.
I just wanted to state for the record that I think, well, in my perspective, you have gone leaps and bounds to accommodate city council. And if Carmine had sent you an email asking you questions and you responded to it, I don't think it's fair for us to deny you the first reading of this ordinance because you've complied with our regulations for the past two months. We've asked you to go back and do something. You've done it. Again, you've done it. You've spoken with Colonial Acres. They're on board. You're on board. These, these calculations that may be off, I understand that that's an issue for my fellow council members and I respect that. However, at the same time, if the city of South Lyon, if we have an agent working on a rehab, which would be Carmine, is asking you for something and you answered those questions in your timeframe, it's not anyone's fault that it didn't get back to us in time. So I don't think it's fair to hold you up any further than you've already been held up. So my vote is to move this forward tonight.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So again, I'm going to go back to the numbers you just threw out. 1,800 square foot house, 12 by 25 deck, 300 more square feet. It's 2,100 square feet on a 5,000 square foot lot. That's about 36 to 40% lot coverage.
Right.
Okay? It's not 25%. So again, want to know how many of these lots with that proposed deck meet the existing ordinance of 25% lot coverage? The numbers you just gave support 36%. 50% higher than the ordinance currently allows. And it's, you know, and that's why you're coming to us and asking us to grant this blanket waiver of that ordinance throughout that subdivision and that's what the concern is. Okay? That the bulk of that, you know, almost 40% of that yard will be hard material, okay? For runoff and everything else. So that's the concern and that's the information, to the best of my understanding, that Councilmember Kibble was requesting.
The answer to that is three lots that do not meet that requirement.
So in order to meet that requirement, every one of those lots, based on what the numbers you just gave, would have to be greater than 5,000 square feet. Probably closer to seven.
For overall lot footage, if you can give us a minute on that, for, for overall footage of footprint to lot, as far as the overall coverage ratio by city ordinance, we still are well within. And with PDs or cluster type developments, that's generally a factor. But he's, Al, the engineer is going, is looking at that if you can give him a minute.
Well, that's why we wanted this information so we could assess it at the meeting. Doing this on the fly in a conversation is, is really kind of pointless because there's, there's just simply no way that you end up taking an average of 5,000. So clearly the, there's variance in the 50 lots that you've proposed here to come up with that 5,000 square foot figure. I, to me, it seems as though there must be a gang of lots that are way undersized to be able to accomplish putting the 1,800 square foot home on it because there's, you'd have to have so many lots that are substantially bigger to be able to do that within the 25, 25% of lot coverage, of the building coverage, structure coverage. So that's just not possible.
I can respond to that only with.
Kelly.
There's a section of the, of the report that hasn't changed in months, actually three years. And what, what was approved before and what we're showing now, what we've been showing for the last few months, it's less tense than it was before. That, that conversation is, is still the same. So as the report stands with side yards and setbacks, it's much more, the, whether you want to say relaxed or, we've relaxed the plan from a density perspective considerably. And I don't want to get into this at the beginning, but I, I will get into it now that this site was approved for 90 units with outdoor parking. And now we're at 50 units with attached garages, a vinyl fence along the south property line, landscape in excess of what your ordinance is.
It's, okay. Allow me to ask you to take a quick pause here. Could you please come back up to the microphone? You've been very patient and I appreciate that.
Thank you. You did provide the information and is there, but as a professional, I need to look at each and every lot. That's my job is to measure, to go with the rule, do the calculations for every lot. Any professional should be given the opportunity and the time to do their work carefully. I had several hours to do that and get a report. I'm not comfortable providing you with a report that isn't, you know, thorough and I haven't done a good job on. I'm not comfortable doing that. And so we did not provide a report because we didn't have the information and time to do that. My understanding was that the information per an email was going to be coming into us on Monday afternoon and then it was supposed to come Tuesday and it didn't for some, a lot of reasons. And then we finally got it Wednesday afternoon, late afternoon. So perhaps Monday, we, if we had it Monday or Tuesday, we could have. I certainly could have. I could come down to city hall, which is what I would have to do to get the plans like this. I got a digital copy and I'm on my computer blowing things up. I take a scale. I, I take a scale and actually measure it and make sure that everything is accurate. That's the kind of detail that goes into it. And so it, it might be there and I appreciate that he has provided all the information. Unfortunately, we just haven't had the opportunity to look at it and give you our professional opinion.
Thank you. Councilmember Prezian, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Ms. McIntyre. I just, so it sounds to me like you're saying you need more time.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we're not saying it's bad. We just need more time to review the information. Absolutely.
So it sounds to me like council, we may have been a little bit too impulsive. Maybe we should have asked you to come back in a month. So, I mean, to move this forward and to not take up any more of your time, because I know you keep coming back here, week after week, every two weeks. What's it going to take to have you be able to thoroughly look over the plans?
Typically, for anyone in, in the planning field, we, we would ask for 10 days, 10 business days. I'm not asking for that. I'm asking for three. We have been working with Mr. Cavallari with, we've had several meetings, conference calls. We've been working with him and it, we have a great relationship we're going forward with getting the things done, but there are just some loose ends that need to be tied up. Four days, if I could please have four business days to look at it.
We'll give you more than four business days.
I mean, truly, I mean, that's last minute and that, you know, that's not typical. You wouldn't do that typically for just anyone, anyone coming in. So that is fast track.
I appreciate your due diligence. Please don't think we don't. Mr. Cavallari, I know you had mentioned this before, but how times, time sensitive is this to you?
If this was February or March, it'd be a little bit different. But trying to get the project in this year is extremely important. I don't in any way, shape or form mean to diminish the work that, that Kelly has done or Carmen has done. And we are at a first reading and based on the emails that I have, there were three questions asked and we addressed it. And I understand that the, the time of going through each and every lot, this isn't the last time we're going to be in front of this, this body. We have to go back to planning again. The plan that was sent last week does address the issues. If, if planning comes up with two more issues or three more issues, I have to address them before I go to planning again and before I come to council again. If we were just down to these last three issues and we could not demonstrate what, how we're, how they're being addressed on the plan and, and if planning is comfortable with it and planning, I, I could completely understand. We're in a very time sensitive industry and I think it's in the best interest of, from a project standpoint, that when you are in a race against the clock to get a project built in the ground and on January 1, the assessor's out there and we've got developed lots, there are homes under construction and, and the project moves forward. I completely understand what Kelly is saying, what I, but I believe that there will be another item that comes up after tonight that I will be speaking with Carmen and Kelly about. What that is, I don't know, but we're not walking out the door tonight with an absolute final approval. We still have, we just get halfway there after tonight.
Councilmember Kibble's been very patient.
I was hoping, Kelly, could you do me a favor and take a look at the chart that's on there and if you could identify what the general consensus of lot size is?
Okay.
Rental list.
Yeah, and each lot, we've got the area spectrum for each. It looks like the lowest we have is just under 5,000 and we have some that go up to 8,000.
Okay, is that predominant or is that?
Predominantly, they're in the, let's see, 5,000, 5,000.
Okay. Well, and that, that's, that's where the, the trouble lies. When the, the vast majority of them are 5,000 square foot, there's no way you end up being compliant to lot coverage with an 1,800 square foot home.
Okay, yeah. Councilmember Crisswell, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to, at this time, to make a motion to postpone the first reading of the ordinance residing parcel 2119, 126002, Thomasville from RM1, multiple family.
Thank you, I'd like to, at this time, to make a motion to postpone the first reading of the ordinance rezoning parcel twenty-one nineteen, one twenty-six zero zero two Thomasville from R M one, multiple family, to P D, plan developed, subject to the conditions discussed here tonight for one meeting, and that would be our first meeting in September.
Discussion.
Go ahead.
We need a second first before there's a discussion.
I wanted to actually ask, was there a motion from Councilmember Kibble earlier that would have been the first motion?
Well, I got halfway through it.
Okay, so we will, Councilmember Kurtzwell's motion has been recognized. Councilmember Perezian.
I did not make a motion, but I did have a discussion.
You had a discussion point, go ahead.
We need a second first for a discussion.
Do we have a second?
I'll support.
Thank you. Councilmember Perezian, go ahead.
Um, Ms. McIntyre, I can have you come back up. Uh, just quickly, I was curious, are these questions that you know off the top of your head that were asked at the Planning Commission? Were these things that were, I just don't understand why this wasn't worked out at the level at Planning Commission, and then now it's coming here, when these seem like, these seem like kinks that should have been worked out. I'm confused.
The information that was provided at the Planning Commission level was inaccurate.
So how did it get out of Planning Commission?
Um, well, the calculations were based on, and what they did is basically, when they said overall lot coverage, they were talking about the entire property as a whole, not the individual lots. And as we got into it further.
Water area and everything else, right?
Yes, and then, you know, we're looking at in the deck, since these things are coming up. And so, pardon me, the lot coverage would affect, if, if something changes with lot coverage, you are, may have to change lot sizes and house sizes, which is huge. They did, they knew that it was coming back to them for more site plan details. But, yeah, they, they didn't, they were going off the assumption of information that was provided, which is why it's so important that I do the calculations. Thank you.
This is a no-brainer. I mean, it looks like in an effort to rush this thing through, which has, it's not on us.
Well, I look forward to them being able to, to make some headway.
I do too.
Can I make a comment on that last point?
State your name, please.
Sorry, Alan Pruss, Monument Engineering, two nine eight Veterans Drive, Olive Hill. Um, and I understand the question in, in the comments in the, about the lot coverage. And to Council and members of Perezie point, I mean, we have a review letter dated August sixth of this year indicating that we are in compliance with the lot coverage. If we calculated the lot coverage incorrectly, we would have expected that to be a comment from the planner at that time. And, you know, we're trying to, you know, accommodate and do things the right way. And if we're provided with the letter, and this lot coverage comment has been consistent for, I'll say, over a year, since this project started back in two thousand and fourteen. And that's the premise that we've been going on, under the P D agreement.
That's been debunked, though, since we've, it's come here. So irrespective of what took place at planning, doesn't change the fact that it's still not compliant. So we need to end up getting that cleared up.
The lot coverage per your P D is compliant, because the P D takes in the overall space of the whole development.
All right.
So per the P D, it is, and has been, and it's been part of the review letters, and it was discussed in, in planning. And frankly, after this meeting, I don't even know, like, what, what additional information do we, do we bring?
Correct information, correct information would be great.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm just telling you how it is. And so I am sorry that this got pushed through our planning developers, and we caught a problem. And we need it fixed, and our people didn't have enough time to look at it. And that's just how it is. So we have a motion on the floor and a second.
Discussion.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion passes. I apologize, guys, it's just how it goes. Old Business Number Two, the second reading of ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of South Lyon, conditionally rezoning eight twenty-five West Lake Street parcel, excuse me, parcel twenty-one dash thirty dash one twenty-six dash zero zero five from R one A, one-family residential to R M three, multiple-family residential.
Good evening, Council. Bob Langen, one twenty-eight North Center Street. Principal, and on behalf of L V Holdings, the applicant tonight. I think that the only issue before us tonight that is in any way different from what we all went through at the last meeting was that City Attorney Wilhelm has proposed an extension for the time limit to obtain final site plan approval from six months to eight months. And that is consistent, and I appreciate it, Mr. Wilhelm. That's consistent with the feedback that I got from our civil engineer, Cliff Seber of Seber Keats and Associates. Even eight months, depending on the permitting requirements that we face on this project, may, may be snug. But we feel comfortable with the eight months, and if we encounter a snag, we will come back to you, and we will outline our efforts to obtain final site plan approval. And we will rely on your continued good nature to extend us if we earn it. So I don't have anything to offer other than that, and I'm happy to answer any new questions or, or old questions that weren't answered last time.
Councilmember Perezian, go ahead.
Um, Attorney Wilhelm, I have just two edits for the agreement. It'd be page two. The third, whereas, there's two two thousand and eighteen's, so one duplicate.
Is this in the packet, or the additional information provided?
It's in the packet that it was provided to council. So if you're looking at the agreement, page two, under recitals. Third, whereas. And then page seven, number sixteen, severability. I think it should be, it should read, instead of this, it should read the invalidity of any provision. This invalidity, that invalidity, invalidity. Thank you.
Attorney Wilhelm, go. I just want to make sure we're clear, so the additional information related to the time limits is contained in paragraph four, the packet information, so the ordinance contains the agreement verbatim. And I overlooked that the agreement would need to be approved separately. Filling in that blank, and working with Kelly, she provided some information prior to the last meeting. And I want to make sure that council is comfortable with those dates. Initially, it was six months considered. Based on the comments from Mr. Langen, that might be a little short. I bumped it out eight months to get final site plan approval. From there, they would get another year to get building permits. And from building permits, they would have thirty months to get a final C of O. And because this is a phased development, if they build the one phase, they would have complied with that. So the city really has, it does, I checked the statute, the city has the authority under M Z A, M C L one twenty-five thirty-four oh five to set those time limits. I want to make sure you know what was being proposed. There's no reason to jam the applicant. If they feel that they need more time, you should certainly be willing to listen to why they might need that and adjust accordingly. But those are the proposed time periods, there were no other changes to the documents.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I, I don't have any misgiving with this. I have to say that I, I don't think that there would have been any resistance had we left the language alone, and you requested an extension. I don't think that there would have been any trouble moving in that same direction. But if you feel more comforted by this, I don't, I don't have any misgivings with it, so.
I think it's ideal that you were looking that far ahead, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
I move to approve the second reading of the ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of South Lyon, conditionally rezoning parcel number twenty-one dash thirty dash one twenty-six dash zero zero five, eight twenty-five West Lake Street, from R dash one A, one-family residential to R M dash three, multiple-family residential as presented.
Discussion.
Councilmember Perezian, go ahead.
Um, Tim, I have, our attorney, Attorney Wilhelm, I have a question for you again. Do we ever figure out whether this is, it's still in the master plan as industrial, zoned for industrial, correct?
I believe that's correct.
So then the next step would be, we would have to amend the master plan?
I would defer to C I B on whether and what process is needed to do that. I don't know that off the top of my head.
Ms. McIntyre?
Yes, typically, we update, we should be updating the master plan every five years, and it will be reflected in that. Sometimes you do have things in the master plan that there is an exception, which this would be, because it's a conditional rezoning, and there would kind of be like an asterisk to that. So it can stay, master plan is industrial, until we do our update, which should be, I think, within the next two years.
Okay, thank you, I just want to make a record of that.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
I have one more.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Uh, just to take on to that, with conditional rezoning, when it comes to the master plan, the reason you put the asterisk in there is because on conditional rezoning, sometimes it can revert back to the origi, yeah, it can revert back. If the conditions of the rezoning, conditional rezoning agreement are met, then the rezoning of the property reverts back to what it originally was. So that's why you put the asterisk in the master plan until the project is completed, and there's no reversion under the conditional rezoning agreement. So I'm just saying a little bit of additional information.
Thank you.
Might I add a double asterisk, that recalling that this property has only been in the city for a year and a half?
That's right.
And what it was annexed, it came in as residential.
By, by virtue of the ordinance, right.
Exactly.
Question.
I do like the idea of us taking care of the paperwork, though, solely so that we can rely on our master plan guiding developments as they come down the pike. I'd hate to have a, a weakness because we, we approved something that wasn't actually planned for that, or master planned for that.
Councilmember Richards.
Um, Mr. Langen, um, I'm in favor of development, okay? I like to see it. In this particular property, where do you plan, you don't have sewer and water on this land at this time. Where do you plan to go to get it? There's, it's a hundred and sixty-five feet through the Tube Mill property on the south side of Lake Street. Or you could angle over to Charleston Park and possibly turn it in. There is no sewer and water within the city limits across from you directly on the north. And the other option is that you could go through the Chuck Smith property, okay, on south. Now, have you, that's, it's an order that may take some time, okay, and be costly for you. Have you thought about that, okay?
Well, not only have I thought about it, but people far smarter than me have thought about it. And unfortunately, he's not here tonight, but our civil engineer, Cliff Seber, has done the preliminary calculations and has ascertained that municipal services are available to the property. And I, I believe that the sewer is across the street, and it's deep enough for us to tap.
Yeah, it is at Charleston Park, but not directly.
Well, yeah, again, I, I would dearly love to answer you intellectually, but I don't, I don't possess that skill. I, I do rely on Cliff Seber, our consulting engineer, and he has assured me that there is a workable, feasible plan to gain access to municipal utilities. And once he says that, I, I trust him. He's, he's a trusted consultant.
Okay, but I'm not wrong, okay? You've got a hundred and sixty-five feet of swamp, okay? Tube Mill owns it, all frontage on Ten Mile to the east of you, okay? And you've got, I don't know how many feet of Chuck Smith property with a light industrial west-end development on the south of you. And I've got a hunch that Mr. Smith isn't going to grant you access to his sewer and water lines, okay? So that only leaves you to go across at an angle to Charleston Park, okay, on the, on the north side of Lake Street, which is feasible, they've got a big line, okay?
I do see, I, I, again, forgive my effort at guessing, but I do see a proposed water main, twenty, uh, A, it wouldn't be a twenty-two inch water main, that'd be giant. I don't know, there's a proposed water main, and it's, I don't, I don't see the sizing of it, but it's, maybe it's an eight inch or a twelve inch. And that looks like it goes to the eastern boundary of our property. And I don't know if it goes across Lake Street, or if it remains on this side of Lake Street.
Well, you have eight months to flesh that out.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, you know, I, I just don't want to continue to bore you with my.
I'm just letting you know, okay, you're facing some problems with this. And I, I'm for development of the place, I hate to see that house turned, torn down, like I mentioned earlier, but I suppose that's the world we live in, okay? Be ashamed not to develop that property, nobody's going to set up a farm there and raise turkeys and goats. It's going, in today's world, it's going to be developed with the, what's, what is the phrase they use? Of reasonable return of investment, okay, on your, whatever you do. But you've got a problem with that property, okay? Just letting you know.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes, thank you for being here.
Thank you for your consideration, councilmembers.
Now, that was two, right?
It was two.
Yeah, so, um.
Two A.
Two A, I'd like to make the motion, we approve the conditional rezoning agreement between the City of South Lyon and L V Holdings, L L C for eight twenty-five West Lake, South Lyon, Michigan, parcel number twenty-one dash thirty dash one two six dash zero zero five. And authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
All right, we can't, we can't have three of them. So Councilmember Walton, you've got the second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you again. And Attorney Wilhelm, will you be circulating a, a execution copy for us all, too? I'll come in, we'll come in and sign when it's ready. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good luck.
On to Old Business Number Three, second reading of ordinance amendment to add section twenty-two dash one six seven, soliciting in a public roadway prohibited and exceptions.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council, there have been no changes since the first reading, and, uh, you've seen this before, I'm not going to provide any summary if there are questions. I'm ready to answer whatever questions you may have.
Councilmember Perezian.
I'll make the motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance amending the City of South Lyon Code of Ordinances, chapter twenty-two, businesses, article four, solicitors, I'm sorry, article six, solicitors, to add a new section, twenty-two, one sixty-five, soliciting in public roadways prohibited, exceptions to comply with the requirements and statutory amendments in Public Act one twelve of two thousand and seventeen, applicable to soliciting in public roadways.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. With that, we'll move on to the budget this evening. If no one has anything for the budget, we'll move on to the manager's report and Chief Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last city council meeting, councilmembers expressed concern regarding the de-watering excavation project at Heinon Engineering and possible contamination in the discharged water. As I reported in my weekly report to council, the building department confirmed that the project was properly permitted and in compliance with city requirements. I also checked with the Oakland County Water Resource Commissioner's Office at council's request, determined that the drain was not their drain. I then confirmed with D P W foreman, Ron Brock, that the water was being discharged into a city-owned storm drain. And that, that discharge had in fact been coordinated with D P W. I then authorized analysis of the discharged water. That analysis was conducted, and the results indicated either non-detect or below threshold results for volatile organic compounds, which was the concern expressed by council. Since that time, the de-watering project has been completed, and I believe that the stand for the Christmas tree is in place. Next item, I conducted research on issues regarding two different subdivisions in the city. One question was about ownership of the park and Carriage Trace. The other question involved the lack of streetlights in Charleston Park. Following a manual search of city council minutes, it was determined that the city, in fact, did accept ownership of the Carriage Trace Park on August ninth, two thousand and three. And work is continuing on the Charleston Park streetlight issue. I'm in communication with Sing Development and D T E on that. Final item, I worked with D D A and Economic Development Director Donahue, as he mentioned earlier, regarding the Bonner properties located at one eleven and one thirteen North Lafayette, as well as one thirty-five East Lake. A meeting is scheduled for this Thursday, August thirtieth, to discuss building conditions and compliance with city codes. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything for Chief Collins? Councilmember Kibble, go ahead. Councilmember Kivell, go ahead.
I happened to have a conversation with Susan Martin and she was, that's her field with the storm drain and all. And there was, it could very well have been myself that inartfully called it a storm sewer. And she was kind of, that got her back up because that's not what we were, what they were dumping into. It was a simply storm, you know, a storm drain. So there's, apparently there are storm sewers that are composite of both storms and sewers. And that kind of got her back up, so.
We do try not to mix the two.
I thought it was funny that she was that involved in it, so. And she watched the meeting, so.
All right, well, thank you very much, Chief. At this time, we will open the floor for our second public comment. Please state your name and address. We will close public comment. Oh, did we? I'm sorry, I did not mean to rush through that.
My name is Denise Marie and I live at Colonial Acres. I live in phase three. My address is 25328 Franklin Terrace. I have some questions about that builder that was here previously. He came and we, I was at the meeting and there was a lot of question and answers. I saw him writing the questions and the answers down on a sheet of paper. Did he submit those questions and answers to city council?
I have not gotten a copy of those.
Okay. There's a couple of things. There's a plant that's on that property and it is an endangered plant. It's called a trillium. I don't know if you're aware of that. I don't know if the DNR needs to get involved. He became a little bit sarcastic when I mentioned it, when it was brought up at the meeting. And he said, well, we'll just transplant those plants wherever you want them, which was okay, fine. My issue is that if you start digging up that property in September, in like October, November, when those plants are dead right now, you won't be able to tell which ones are the endangered plants or not. What's going to happen with those? There's endangered plants on that property. That's one of my questions. The other thing, I have several actually. The fence is supposed to be six foot high. When they put the deck on the back, how much privacy is that going to allow us in Colonial Acres? How high off the ground is the deck going to be? You know, where's the grade level on the property as far as the building is concerned? So, what, we have just four feet, you know, of privacy? Once, you've got, are there two-story buildings backed up on that property so that people can look into the homeowner, homeowners on the other side in Colonial Acres? You know, are they going to be upstairs looking down on the neighbors? You know, we respect each other's privacy. That's our issue with the builder, one of the issues is if you're building on that back line that backs up to Colonial Acres, are there going to be two-story buildings back there that are going to be infringing on the privacy of the people behind them? Am I making sense? One other thing that we asked is that their construction company does not use Heritage Boulevard for their thoroughway. We, that is a private road. We take care of that road. Am I done?
Yeah, well, just please wrap up on that.
Okay, just that, that's private property. We maintain the road. We don't want construction trucks coming through there to get to that property in the back because they're going to tear up those roads. So those were the things that were brought up at the meeting and I don't know if he brought them up to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise, what is your last name?
Marie, I'm thinking of my name.
Do we have anyone else for public comment? All right. Thank you, we'll move on now to council comments. Councilmember Richards, why don't you start us off tonight?
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In answering this lady, Marie, I don't, I didn't get your last name.
My first name is Denise and my last name is Marie.
Oh, oh Denise. Okay. I've been acquainted with this whole thing since 2015, okay? And when it was the previous owners, okay, of that property, okay? Tom Schroeder was the guy's name. And then he transferred it in title to Mr. Cavallari, okay, and his associates, okay? This whole thing, the problems you see here going on, I blame the planning commission for this for the last three years on this deal. And other people may not feel the same way, but that's my council comment, okay? Now, to move on with other items. In the extreme heat of today, I rode my bicycle to the east end of town and I went north up the bike path and very scenic. And when I was in the shade, the wind was wonderful because I was sweating quite a bit, let's put it that way, okay? I mean, it was hot and I'm an older person, I guess. So I went down to the turnaround at the school property, the bypass that goes over behind the football field. And I started back up and I took the cutoff that goes into the Knowles. I don't know if anybody you know about the Knowles, but it's a subdivision that's under construction. So I biked up in, well, I got to walk it, I can't climb that, okay? But I walked it up in there, right where the road ends, right where the concrete stops, okay? And all the big machinery is gone up there. He's site planned his place. He's got it graded. It appears he's got the crushed limestone in the base, whether it's six inches or not, I don't know, but he's probably rolled it and he's ready to lay his concrete street, okay? But he's checked himself, he's holding up. And I would do the same thing if I was in his position, but I would hold until, till I had the number of houses. He hasn't got the houses, okay? Hasn't sold the 80% quota to put the road in. But if I was him, I'd do the same thing. Although I'm critical of the place from time to time, but I give him a fair shake also. Okay, so I went down Mill Street to the north, or to the south, rather, stopped into the shop that I used to work at for three or four years and had an item or two to discuss with him. Then I went on down to the city's water tower, okay? Which is going great guns right now with our 200 and some thousand dollar project to sandblast the inside of it and paint it and reseal it, okay? And so I parked the bike and balancing myself, I got off the bike and I looked at it and boy, I'm looking up and I'm hanging on for, you know, because I might lose my balance. And I thought to myself, maybe I'll go over there and walk in on the guys and see what they have to say, you know? But then I thought to myself, I better not do this. I'd lose my balance and they'll have a fit, you know? And them guys are probably union. Anyway, that was my excursion for today to let you know where your tax dollars are going, okay? And developments that you might not visit every chance you get, okay? Next, I want to bring up something fast here. We got this report, okay, in our package. And on the very back, there's something here that cites me, Bob Donahue uses that phrase, it's so exciting. Well, there is something exciting here. It talks about state funding to increase in the fiscal year of 2019 up to 2020 from, from, 200, yeah, 325 million to 600 million for so many miles of road each year. And I'm hoping that we can get our name with our new city manager on board to get Lake Street redone and get half of it paved. But this is, this comes from Oakland County, okay? And if we can get our representatives to get on that, we should stand a chance because we can't afford to do it, okay? Simple as that. And on number three item, the last item, I want to say, we had the greatest concert in the park that I've ever seen last Friday night, just about, and all my memory. 350 people for the Beatles concert, okay? Bob Martin, our former DPW man, put it on, arranged it, did everything. At the end of the show, 21 people were down on our bricks in front of the pavilion, okay? Dancing away, having a wonderful time. Most of them ladies dancing together and one lady that was, I assume, a grandmother, holding a grandchild or something in her arm and she's dancing around there too. And that was, I counted 21 of them. And then we had a light rain and everybody got a little wet and the band closed up and it was just a wonderful experience, the best band concert I've ever seen in a long time. And I'm not kidding, it was 350 people there. Thank you very much, people, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Last Tuesday, I had the opportunity to attend the groundbreaking ceremony at the Salem, South Lyon District Library as they prepare to do another major addition to the, to that facility. The expansion is going to end up doubling the size of the current children's area. It's going to include a programming room, designated tween area, quiet study and seating areas for children. And these are all items that the community expressed interest in improving. So congratulations to Don Olson and the rest of the great folks at the library for keeping another promise to this community. On Sunday, I had an opportunity to take the South Lyon History and Ghost Tour with Jennifer Redfern Siler and had the chance to learn some of the history behind, you know, our great city, some of the buildings that are there. And if you haven't taken the tour, I would encourage you to do so just to learn a little bit more about South Lyon and its earliest residents. And finally, as Councilmember Richards mentioned, last Friday was the last concert in the park for the season. We had a great group perform, The Invasion. They performed a treasure trove, if you will, of British Invasion hits. And I certainly hate to see the concerts come to an end, but, you know, we need to get ready to welcome autumn to South Lyon. And I just want to take this moment to recognize the efforts of Bob Martin, who made the concerts in the park a reality for another year. For those of you who know Bob, you know he's a true music lover and he truly enjoys finding great groups to perform on Fridays for us throughout the summer. More importantly, he enjoys bringing this pleasure to the city he loves and served for so many years. So from all of us to you, Bob, thanks so much for your time and effort and we can't wait until next year.
Thank you. Councilmember Walton?
You know, I really don't have too much to say tonight, just a couple of quick things. I also heard great things about the concert. And where I live, I happen to hear it from my house, I don't go down to the park and enjoy the crowd. I probably should, but, you know, I do enjoy it from my front porch. So that being said, I also want to thank the Witch's Hat for their wonderful event they had this weekend where they raised 15,055 dollars for Blessings in a Backpack. It was the Fury for a Feast. And I also want to thank the South Lyon Police Department for being there to assist with everyone crossing the roadways, keeping everybody safe. I know we have those new signs downtown for crossing crosswalks and I would really like to see possibly some temporary ones or ones that can be more permanent down near the Witch's Hat because there is a lot of crossing there and a lot of, not just during special events, but all the time. So that could be noted for future. But certainly it was great to see the South Lyon PD out there helping everybody out and that event was wonderful. And I also want to thank the Oakland County Sheriff. I noticed that this week when I was walking my dog to town, I tend to walk her very early in the morning or very late at night. And every time they went by, they waved. I waved back, you know? I wave at the South Lyon Police Department, some of them wave, some of them don't, but it doesn't matter. It's just kind of a very friendly town that we live in and I enjoy the fact that everybody waves and so. I enjoy that and I just hope everybody keeps waving. Have a good night.
Thank you. Councilmember Perezian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't really have much except for volunteer, please volunteer, Pumpkin Fest needs you. Aside from Pumpkin Fest, Parks and Rec, Cultural Arts Commission, Historical Society and Commission, who else, the Missing Cable Commission, and anybody else? If you know anyone who's interested, please just spread the word. The more help we can get, the more we can achieve. So with that being said, thank you and have a wonderful night.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Marie, I am going to address your issue on the trillium. I'm going to do my research. A trillium is a protected plant in the state of Michigan and I have a problem with a developer that doesn't respect some of our endangered plant life that we have. Ferns in the forest are also, some varieties of ferns are also protected. And I think that it's just a good stewardship of the earth when we respect things that are becoming extinct and do what we can to protect them and not necessarily laugh it off. So I want to do my research, find out what the DEQ requires in terms of displacing protected plants. I've been on one protection and that was maybe about seven years ago where a developer was moving into the Bloomfield area. And so a lot of us in the Master Gardener Program got together and assisted in moving the protected plants in the area to another protected environment. So let me do my research on that. Thank you for bringing that to my attention because I am going to stay on top of this. Next, I just want to say that this evening I attended the grand opening and the ribbon cutting for the Mat Cats in their new location over on Gruiswold Road. This is the Duncan Building. It was just wonderful to be over there and to see Tom Duncan, Scott Duncan. And we just had an absolutely great time over there with all the parents and all the youngsters that were coming into the Mat Cat program. What I did not know is that the Mat Cat program also includes young girls. I thought it was just a wrestling organization just for the boys, but it's not. There's also a girls' program and that apparently is filling up very quickly. They have a fabulous place over there in the Duncan Building. I had an opportunity to also have tour of the Solera's new accommodations with Amy. Fabulous, fabulous accommodations over there, great move for them. So it was wonderful spending the evening with the Mat Cats and with Amy. Next, I'd like to thank Katie for her volunteer efforts with Blessings in a Backpack. We sometimes forget that children during the summertime also have needs with respect to food and Katie does an incredible job making sure that the children that are in need during the school time also have opportunities for food and nourishment in the summertime. This is an incredible volunteer in our community and I'm very, very pro those individuals who do volunteer in the private sector with faith-based organizations and with nonprofits. You clearly are making a difference. Also, along those lines, I would like to thank the Witch's Hat Brewery for another fabulous feast of fury in which almost $15,000 was raised for local charities. I remember when the Hat first opened up in the Brookdale Shopping Center and the seating capacity was about 20 to 30 people. And to see how they've grown into a major business that is an anchor in our city and surrounding community and clearly, clearly the owners are giving back to our community. It is a blessing that we have Aaron and Ryan in our community. Next, this is very important, being a business attorney, John is having a financial seminar. He is the branch manager over at Comerica Bank, John Hogan, many of us know him. He's a wonderful individual. He's been in the financial business for many, many, many years. He has a great reputation in working with many of the banks. His seminar begins on September 23rd, starting, September 25th, excuse me. And all, and his seminar starts at 6:30 and he runs all the way through April 23rd. This is a fabulous, fabulous seminar to attend. He's going to talk about credit score in one month. He's going to be talking about banking and ID theft and managing your money, Retirement 101, renting versus buying, managing your cash flow. I'm telling you, John Hogan is the guy to go to for this seminar. So please make sure that you, at least, I'm going to take one or two of these in myself and it's a great seminar. Next, there's a great event that's coming to the hotel in October. I'd love to give you the details, but I've been sworn to secrecy until the next meeting. I will be working on trying to sell the event out. It's going to be absolutely hysterical, lots of laughs. We're going to have fun. Hotel, second floor, we're going to sell it out. So keep, block off, October 24th. All right, that's all I can say, I can't say anything else. But anyway, keep that in mind, it's going to be a great event coming to town. All weekend, I was out, out and about all weekend and I heard nothing but excitement for our new city manager, Paul Zelenek. Everybody thought he was starting today. And I had to remind everybody, well, he has a couple little requirements, you know, including notifying his employer, you know, that he is going to be moving on at some point. So I do want to say that, Mr. Mayor, that you received a lot of compliments about how you and Tim Wilhelm and the consultant handled the interviewing process. It was extremely transparent. And I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for all the time that you put in on this project. You had a lot of coals in the fire. The most important one was your family getting married and you put the city as a priority. And many of us want to thank you for your commitment because this is a great result, just an absolutely great result. Last, Tim, I don't know, can you just give me like where we are on the final contract with Mr. Zelenek? I know we talked a little bit this afternoon. The items that you went over with me, I didn't seem to have a problem. I think it's important to understand that we are getting an executive and I think we need to keep that in perspective, that this is an individual highly qualified, 30 years' experience in city government. And I think he brings to the table just a phenomenal array of talent and- array of talent and skills. And so I didn't hear anything today that would have stopped me from saying, oh, I think we need a special meeting to go over this or go over that. I mean, everything was very reasonable, so I don't know where anybody else stands.
Mr. Mayor? So to, I've provided some communication directly to all the council members. I've shared a draft employment agreement with Mr. Zelenak. I've included James Petrino so that he can provide any input that he has regarding the issues. I spoke at length with Mr. Zelenak this afternoon. He did raise some concerns. Provided you with information on those issues, my position on them, and I've started to receive feedback from council members on this. I have not heard anything that would indicate that these are issues that will hold things up. They're simply a matter of working through the issues and reaching a final agreement.
How soon do you think we'll have a finalized contract? The community is so anxious. I mean, I heard it all weekend. And it was, it's big news, it's big news. And plus, I was with people from Lyon Township this evening. It's big news.
I can't give you a specific date, but Mr. Zelenak has expressed an interest in moving as quickly as possible. This council has expressed an interest in moving as fast as possible. I'm going to try and make that happen. If Mr. Zelenak is ready to do that, we'll work through the issues. There's a few things that I need to chase down from the benefit side to make sure that we know what is in play, and then we'll work, I'll work with you, and we'll come up with a final agreement that will be presented for final approval by council.
I just want to make one more comment on that, is we are getting, once again, I'd like to state, an individual of thirty years' experience in government, and I would not expect him to start at the bottom and take this job with what somebody maybe five or six or ten years in the industry would have. I mean, he's a seasoned professional, and I would hope that we would provide him with the benefits that are reflective of his credentials and his years in service to government. So, thank you. Other than that, good night, everyone. Thank you for inviting all of us into your home tonight. Labor Day is coming up, so have a safe weekend, and Ms. Murray, you're number one on my list.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Councilmember Kivell?
There was an awful lot of conversations about Mr. Zelenak, and everybody seemed just gleeful. They all seemed to glean from watching our videos that the guy has complete control over that position, and he's going to be an enormous asset. The only, the only negative comment I heard was from somebody that lives in Linden as a business owner here. He wasn't thrilled to see his really good city manager leave his community, but I can certainly understand that, so. The other two issues were essentially the concert in the park, the invasion crowd, everybody was having a blast. I mean, it's really neat when you see things, all these cotton tops that were in there dancing because they knew all those sounds, or songs so intimately. That was an awful lot of fun to watch. And, and the thing with Witch's Hat and Fury for a Feast, it really is a remarkable thing to have business owners and the culture that supports that business be so intimately involved in our community. We're quite lucky about that whole thing. The only thing that I haven't heard yet is how much canned goods were actually collected to be given to active faith. But the idea of them recognizing and reaching out to people of need in the area so willingly, that was really some terrific stuff. And they had, I have to commend Ryan. He's, he's got a very good ear, I think he's a former musician, and they booked some really good bands at that event, too. So that was an awful lot of fun to not just sit there and enjoy a beverage. It was good music and good company, so that was a great time. That's really all I had. Thank you, though.
Thank you. I just have a couple of brief things, too. I wanted to congratulate the Mat Cats and South Lyon Area Rec Authority. I've been out there to see the rec department part of the building. I did not get to see the Mat Cats yet, but I will definitely get out there and see that. So congratulations to those guys, those guys on their new location. Exciting weekend last weekend. If you're not aware, the football teams start on Thursday until the school year starts. So they actually played on Thursday last week, so we were a little busy up here. But I did hear that South Lyon and South Lyonees both won, so a great start to the fall football season here in South Lyon in Week One. And then, lastly, I just wanted to make a quick note of a loss of a great American over the weekend in Senator John McCain, who served this country for over sixty years, five and a half of which were served in a North Vietnamese prison camp. And one of the most thoughtful things I heard over the weekend about that was, he really didn't know or how much he loved America until he spent that five and a half years over there. And so I think that's just something to think about with the loss of Senator McCain over the weekend. So with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Move to adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all, have a great night.
Great meeting, Mr. Mayor.
That was a very good catch, Dan.
Great meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Hearing some of the, I mean, just to hear him recording-
It's at home.
Some really wonderful comments through the course of his being a senator. I mean, good heavens.
I'm sure it was your house, and it came in the mail. It was an advertisement for real estate and development.
It was by my neighbors, my neighbors just sold it.
No, I could tell it would be your corner house. You're on the corner.